Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Len Filman, the chairman of the INCO, Intercity Neighborhood Council Organization. As representative of all the neighborhood councils the INCO is sponsoring tonight and next Monday's night's evening event to allow as many people as possible to hear from the candidates who have office. Tonight we have the candidates for the two open city council seats, and Monday we will have candidates for mayor, treasurer, and city clerk. We reached out to the chairpersons of the neighborhood councils for questions and concerns from all parts of the city who presented candidates. So, love talking, stick to any more of your time. I'm turning the mic over to our moderator, Mr. David Merriman, to get tonight's program underway. David?
Thank you for this feedback. How's that? A little better? Okay, thank you. It would be good to tell me now rather than at the end. So, if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent or vibrate so you don't interrupt anything. We're also going to ask you to please hold your applause till the end of the evening. I'll give you a chance. But that way we can keep moving. We have a lot of candidates, only so much time, and applause will shorten up and we'll be quite despair. So, just a little bit about how this works. So, the Intercity Neighborhood Council prepared the questions. They gave me about 20 questions, 25 I picked from that. So, even the neighborhood council and certainly the candidates do not have their questions in advance. We'll be doing opening statements. We drew numbers randomly earlier. We'll be starting with Oscar and working our way down through the opening statements. That'll be one minute. At the end of the evening, we'll be reversing. We'll start with Jack and work our way back for one minute as well. At this time, I do want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and also let you know that I happen to be a moderator with the League of Women Voters. That's why they asked me to do this. I do not live in Oxnard. I'm not supporting, endorsing, or voting for any of these candidates. And on the table when you walked in, I put out some brochures for the League of Women Voters called "The Pros and Cons." As you all know, there are 17,000 propositions for this state this year, and the League of Women Voters is neutral, but we've produced this pamphlet that tells you about each one of those, what's good about it, or the four side, the opposing side, so you can read about all of them. And there are some in Spanish as well, and they're the same information, but English and Spanish. So, please feel free to help yourself to those when you're leaving. And with that, I think we'll go ahead and get started. So, we're going to have one minute candidates. I remind you that our timers are right there in the front. They'll wait about 30 seconds, and then stop. With that, we'll start with our first candidate, Oscar Metcalfe.
Hello, welcome. I'm actually thankful for this opportunity, and I want to thank every single one of you for coming out tonight. My name is Oscar Marial. I am born and raised here in the city of Oxnard. I grew up here, went to the local schools, graduate of Chandler Island High School. I am a graduate of California Lutheran University, where I have a bachelor's degree in history and a master's degree in public policy and administration. I worked for about seven years at Oxford Union High School District as a substitute teacher and as a social science teacher. I am currently a Spanish teacher at Oak Street School. The reason why I'm running for city council is because I want to get back to my community. I want to help promote a safer city, a city where we are united as one, meaning that residents help out. We help reduce, get rid of the stigma here in the city of Oxnard, where we crime.
Thank you, Oscar. Our next candidate is Genevieve Flores-Harrell.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for being here with us. My name is Genevieve Flores-Harrell, and I'm running for Oxford City Council because I'm very proud to call Oxnard my home. I want to invest my time in making Oxnard a place where both businesses and families alike thrive. I grew up in the city. I attended schools in the Rio School District, and I'm a very proud graduate of Oxford High School. Go check it. You know, I have two degrees from the University of Southern California, including a master's degree in public administration. My bachelor's degree I completed in three years because I was ready to come home and make a difference in my community. I currently work as the associate director of the Steppenberg Community Organizing Project. And again, I'm very proud to call Oxnard my home. I definitely want to help be part of the conversation where we can build a city where we're all proud of and one that we can all live, love, and roll. And thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Orlando Dozier.
Thank you to everyone for coming out. It's always very encouraging to see residents participate in this process that we're working through. My name is Orlando Dozier. I'm a candidate for Oxnard City Council. And first, I'll dress the elephant in the room, and that's why I'm wearing this bright pink tie. And I'm wearing this in support of breast cancer this month, and it's a terrible disease that touches so many families, including myself, my own. So, I just wanted to show my support. Later this evening, I hope that I will earn your respect and your vote, and thank you again for coming.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Brian McDonald.
Thank you. Thank you to the INCO for sponsoring this event, for all of you spending time away from home tonight to be with us. I appreciate that. My name is Brian McDonald. I spent 30 years for the Oxnard Police Department, 29 of those was an official with that department on your side as a civilian. And I've been blessed to be your councilman for the last eight years since I finished my second term, and I hope that you'll allow me to continue for another town. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Council of Long Beach, a master's in public administration from Council of Longbridge, and a Juris Doctor from Ventura College of Law. This city has been very, very good to me, and this is a way that I feel like I can return that debt of gratitude to my city and help it become a better place. My campaign is very focused on three simple elements: public safety, bringing trust and faith back to City Hall, and economic guardian. And I'm hoping that as we go through the later discussion, probably on the way after, I'll support you. If you have any questions, I've left a lot of information out front for you to take also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Enrique Petriz.
Hello, my name is Enrique Petriz. I want to be your representative. I want to be able to represent the East, the West, the North, and the South. I want to stop corruption. I want to stop waste and mismanagement of public funding, and I ask for your support. My name is Enrique Petriz. I'm a candidate for the concilio. I want to represent the North, the South, the West, and the East. I want to stop corruption in the city of Oxnard. I want to stop the money that's being used improperly by the citizens of this city. I want to represent them, especially the people of Rose Park and the Colonia and the Saviors of Oxnard. I want to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Steve Huber.
Good evening. Thank you, INCO, for this opportunity, and thank you all for coming out to be informed voters. My name is Steve Huber, and I think that common sense is not common in Oxnard, and we need a good, experienced leader, someone like myself, that has the experience, skills, and abilities to turn the ship around and get us back on the right track. I'm a veteran, commanding officer of a Navy destroyer, and commanding officer of a 2,000-person, $600 million organization. I'm a small business owner, and I help good organizations get better. I'm the chairman of the planning commission. I'm also on the neighborhood watch in my neighborhood. I have three focus areas: practical leadership or common sense leadership, financial responsibility, and trust. And I look forward to the questions this evening, so that you can hopefully hear more about me. But I do have some brochures out on the table as you leave. It has my website, stevednumber4oxnard.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Aaron Star.
My name is Aaron Star, and I ask for your vote to bring a new generation leadership to our city council. I really care about you. When the city council failed to listen to Oxnard residents in voting to increase our sewer rates by 87%, I mobilized our community, put Measure on the number dial line. Measure will overturn the unfair and excessive rate hike. Oxnard is losing jobs, neighboring the communities because our taxes are too high, and regardless of student programs. As your council helps support economic enforcement, such as permit simplicity, to make Oxnard a better place for businesses to grow and hire more workers, I will serve as your taxpayer watchdog to hold the community accountable and keep residents better and more. As a financial controller, I have the vital skills to eliminate wasteful spending and focus our city resources on essential services that residents truly need. With your support, we can move Oxnard forward towards a brighter future. I'd be honored to raise your vote and serve as your voice in the city council.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Al Velozkis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and the beauty public. My name is Al Velozkis. I am a lifelong resident of Oxnard in a sixth generation California. I have been married to my wife for over 50 years. We have two sons and three grandsons and their wives. I have been involved in the community for over 40 years as a manager and coach for Northside Baseball Little League, as first vice-chair of the INCF, and as chairman for the Fremont South Neighborhood Council. I have served with the Oxford Union High School District, 133th Annual Cell of On-Or-Side Committeeing and Boundary Change Committeeing. I served on RFP panels for the city of Oxnard and the Oxford Union High School District. I retired from the National Teachers Union in 1997 after 29 years of service. During that period, I served as a shop store contractor, labor negotiator, and an elected trustee to oversee the youth expenditures on Local 186. I'm sorry.
Our next candidate is Diego Chavez-Tuber.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out today. My name is Deion Chavez Jr., a born and raised resident of the city of Oxnard. The core values of my campaign are trust, unity, and mutual respect. I believe that our residents should have trust in their elected officials, that every decision and project that they take on benefits every single person in our city, regardless of the zip code or the neighborhood that you live in. Unity throughout our entire city, that we are developing all four corners of our city at the same pace. And mutual respect will come once we have that trust and unity. There are two components that brought me to this point in my life. One, there's two sides to the word change. There's those that talk about it and those that take action. I am ready to take action. And the second one is to improve the quality of life for every single person in the city of Oxnard. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next candidate is David Alvez.
Good evening, Al. My name is David Alvez, and I want to be your next city council member because I feel I am the only candidate up here that truly represents in whole the city of Oxnard residents, small businesses, and all the children out there that struggle with so many things on a daily basis. I really truly feel that this city needs a huge change within the insiders, I'm going to call them, with somebody that truly understands leadership abilities, has the guts to not walk out of city council meetings and truly can stand up there and take a vote instead of pleading not to vote. And I just want to let you know that with me in place, your voice will be heard on the inside, as I call it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our next candidate is Jack Pia.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jack Pia. Born and raised in Oxnard.
Put the microphone a little closer to Jack.
Born and raised in Oxnard, third generation. My family's been here 100 years, 35 years in the postal service, retired. And what I envision is a positive change of engagement with all neighborhoods, with communication, full transparency, fiscal responsibility, creating a healthy business climate while creating a positive atmosphere and a quality of life in Oxnard. I believe that with 38 years of community service, whether with the youth, the neighborhood, the community, or even the workplace, I believe I've developed my leadership skills to lead the city into the right direction, and I ask for your vote for Oxnard City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to start this next question with Aaron. Aaron has talked about parks. According to published data reports, when compared to other Ventura County cities, Oxnard scores low in parks and high in obesity and teen birth rates. Studies show that the ratio of public amenities such as parks are some of the things that contribute to helping communities. So, Aaron, the question is, what is your vision for our parks? How will you achieve your vision and pay for it?
The reality is that we don't have a lot of money in City Hall.
Aaron, you can put the microphone a little closer, please. Thank you. And reset the timer, please.
The reality is that we don't have a lot of money in City Hall, and what the city does with parks is very expensive. My personal vision is that I believe that neighborhoods should have more control over their own parks. I think that if neighborhoods actually owned their parks, they would be able to maintain them much better. I think you'd have faster service. I think you could do it for less money for a city. So, that is my basic approach to having better neighborhoods in the city. If we rely on the city to do it, it probably will not get done anytime soon. So, it really comes down to neighborhood control, and that's what I would like to go into this city.
Thank you. Oscar, same question to you. What is your vision for the parks, long-term, short-term, and also how will you pay for that?
Well, short-term, I know the city is working their way to getting parks at the Measure O, the previous bond. But long-term, in particular with the city, you have the old Oxford High School. They have a very small dog park, a corner, probably a 32nd of the actual land is being used. The other, and most of it, is going to waste. If you look on Oxford Boulevard at Aguilas, right next to Zypka High School, there was supposed to be a park there. Residents are still waiting. Previously working there, I know that staff and students that drive are upset that every single day they're there, their car gets full of dirt, simply because the wind takes all the dirt that's there and just goes all over the cars. I know it does take a lot of money to build parks, so on and so forth, but it is for our future. And like I previously said, Oxnard does have that stigma of...
Thank you, Oscar. Our next candidate is Steve. Please share with us your vision for the parks and how you will pay for it.
My vision for the parks and for the city of Oxnard is that our children can walk to a park and feel safe. Those parents that send their children to the parks know they're going to be safe. We have a safe city, and that those parks are the best in the world. First, we have to get our fiscal house on order. Right now, we have a budget problem. It's a weak budget. We need to make sure that it's strong. I've been able to balance budgets in the past, and I know how to prioritize budgets. We need to prioritize the parks so that we can get them fixed. The other thing we need to do is community engagement. We have neighborhood watch, we have heat officers, and that takes care of the prime side of it. But it doesn't take care of the trees and sidewalks and the ground grass that are, you know, the children are playing soccer with in the parks. So, what we need to do is we need to have a chief engagement officer, who should be the city manager, getting out there or getting his managers out there and looking at every park every week so we know what's going on within the city and bringing those issues back through the prioritization. Thank you.
Thank you. Genevieve, same question to you about the parks.
Absolutely. I think green spaces is very important. As someone who used to work with youth, if you don't have a good park, you know, you kind of limit as far as activities you can do with the youth. If I think of the parks in Oxnard, I would like to see these parks kind of go back to natural flora, you know, we're in the middle of a drought, of course, you don't want green or you don't want brown parks, so I think if you go back to plants that are indigenous to this area, you could do a lot of good looking at how we got some of these parks. Of course, you know, as has been mentioned, you know, the city budget is what it currently is, but, you know, moving forward, and I believe that these parks should be made definitely a priority, and I understand that, you know, the current city manager has taken over these parks and has noticed the differences between South Oxford Parks and North Oxford Park. And definitely would want to be part of that conversation to make sure these parks are kept equal.
Thank you. And David, same question to you.
Thank you. So, there's no doubt in anybody's mind here that we need more programs, whether it be arts or youth diversion programs, for our youth in the city. I feel that there's Measure O that we can possibly use in order to pay for some of these facilities, and I really feel that by combining public and private partnerships and using some of the Measure O, we can actually come to where all of you gentlemen up here are talking about, which is, and women, sorry, really talking about, which is to build out our parks, create more arts programs, and really have youth diversion programs that will really create an environment for children to not fall into some of the traps that some of our youth have been falling into for many, many years.
Thank you. Daniel, same question to you.
So, as somebody that used to work for a school district for seven years, I had the opportunity to work with a lot of the youth, from elementary to junior high. A great thing that I had the opportunity to see happen yesterday, 1,000 others, was the benefits of private and public partnerships. What that means is that the private company comes in, furnishes the equipment, pays to maintain that equipment, and the city comes and pays a small portion of that. That's what we need in our city. We need a lot more private-public partnerships. It's already been set up here by multiple candidates that we don't have the funds. So, we need to start looking for alternative avenues to try to get those funds, try to get those resources back into our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, same question to you, and for all of the candidates, I'm getting some comments that it's hard to hear you. So, nobody's speaking too loudly. Get up close to that mic, introduce yourself, and talk. So, Enrique, you're next. Question about parks.
Yes, my vision for our parks. The problem that we have in the city of Oxnard, and has been going on for many years now, is the clear corruption and mismanagement of public funds in the city of Oxnard. We don't have the money to fix our freets, our sidewalks, to beautify our city, and the reason for that is because we have a city council that has not had the vision to correct those deficiencies. We have had department heads who are incompetent. They'll take waste money. They don't try to do more with less. If you, if I take your vote, I'm going to go ahead and take a look at every department in the city, and I'm going to ask every department for a 5% to 10% reduction in their budget. Secondly, we're going to try to find, we're going to form a city committee of citizens to advise the city of Oxnard how to fight corruption, and when we use all that money, we're going to, when we get our money, we're going to build more parks.
Thank you. Al, you're up next. Yes, Al.
I'm happy to understand you. Okay, repeat the question for me.
I'm happy to. So, in Oxnard, there's really not as many parks as in other cities, and they're not in the state of repair as other cities. So, the question is, what can we do in Oxnard to improve the quality of our recreational parks? And that includes your short-term vision and your long-term vision, and how will you pay for the improvements you want to make?
Well, first of all, as you all know, we all have that Measure O funds, and presently there isn't a whole lot of money left in there because it's been disappropriated by other agencies, for example. They took $16 million of Measure O money and put it into balanced budget. Right there, we lost $16 million. Another thing the city hasn't done, they have failed to draw business, economic development. We have a number of good developments out there that could generate millions of dollars annually per year for the next 20, 30 years, and the city council, rather than collecting work with them, they choose to follow lawsuit and try to stop them, and consequently losing $2, $3 million a year in revenue. So, basically, we need to bring in good-paying industries and businesses that will work for the city, which in turn will give the city that additional revenue that we are so desperately in need of. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jack, same question to you.
Yes, I believe that we should use all available funds in our Quimby Funds for all the neighborhoods. Also, with the budget the way it is, I believe if we were more fiscal and responsible and we built reserves, eventually we can afford more amenities for the parks. Also, as chair of the Hobson Park East, I was the neighborhood chair. We organized the neighborhood to clean the parks ourselves. And with engagement with the neighborhoods and helping out with the parks in different aspects, whether it's cleaning or neighborhood watch, I believe an engagement with the neighborhoods can help make the parks a better place.
Thank you. Brian, we'll wrap up with you on the same question about parks.
Thank you. I think there's a lot of things that we can do for parks. If you drive around the city, especially on weekends, you will see that we absolutely do not have enough space for our children to recreate, people to enjoy themselves. There's a lot of opportunity out there with public-private partnerships. We've been approached by many groups that will donate sod, that will donate labor, that will fix the parks up for us. In this city, it's consistently said, we're not interested, it's too much live over. We need to change our mindset. We need to be open to other types of thought processes. I worked with Bank of America, and we held a parcel in the middle of Lemonwood Park. Bank of America said, we'll give it to you. We've got no use for it. You can have it and just take it over. And the first thing that came out of people's knowledge as well was, oh, well, there might be liability there, we're not interested. That's not an acceptable mindset anymore. We need to look at alternatives. There are people out there that will work with us, they will help us to beautify the city like we want to do, and we need to be taking advantage of that, and we're quite simply not at the instant change.
Okay. And we will truly wrap up with you, Orlando, on this question.
Thank you. I have over 20 years of budgeting experience, no use, and experience to address this issue. I also live in River Park, and in River Park, we've turned over over 13 new parks to the city, and those parks are funded through CFDs. So, I would look to use CFD-type funding to fund new parks and new developments. For the existing parks, I'd use the ground maintenance and Measure O funds to fund that. I would also look to sponsor, have the city do some sponsors, some city leagues, so that way it can be organized and we can get the maximum use out of our parks, instead of having so many different organizations vying for talent. I would also hook up the parks to the recycled wastewater because that's free. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, we're going to start the next question with you. Again, candidates, bring the mic close. Jack, public safety. Crime in Oxnard has been increasing the last five years. What specific steps do you think the city council can take to deal with this increase in crime? And would you make any changes to the gang injunction policy at all?
I believe that the city should bring back, there's approximately 60 positions not filled. I believe that we should fill those positions gradually. I believe a lot more emphasis should be put on the youth and young adults. And what was the last part of that question?
The gang injunction.
Gang injunction, and for the gang injunction.
Would you make any changes?
No, I would not make any changes.
Okay, thank you. Orlando, same question to you on public safety. Crime has been increasing. What would you do about it as a city council person? And would you make any changes in the gang injunction policy?
Yes. I served one year as chairman of the Community Relations Commission, so we had a lot of involvement with the community. I think the gang injunction is necessary. However, I would like to take another look at it. I'd like to bring in a lot of the faith-based organizations that we have in the city to give us some input. I would also look to take our youth committee that we now have, and solicit some information from them. Our police department is getting better. We need to fund the remaining empty positions that we have. We also need to finish deploying the body cams, so when they, all the departments will be, all our police officers.
Thank you. Oscar, same question to you about public safety.
Public safety is essential. That's the reason why we can move forward as a city. Quite frankly, I think we need to work as a community to improve the safety of the city. We need to start with the youth. That is the key. Working with the youth will build a long-term, better future for the city of Oxnard. If we do not work with the youth, then it becomes a never-ending cycle. We could hire as many police officers as needed, but the kids are not going to have anything else to do but it'll lead to crime, and eventually the same issues will go over and over again. My goal with the gang injunction, I feel right now it is necessary. However, if we continue working with the youth, I vote to have a city where gang injunction is not needed anymore.
Thank you. Steve, same question to you about public safety, the increase in crime. Steve, and what would you do about it as a council person, and what do you believe should be changed, if anything, about the gang injunction policy?
Thank you. I truly feel that we need to have a strong city in order to have a vibrant city, and in order to do that, we need to make sure that we provide the people, the equipment, and the training that's needed to make sure that we have a safe city. In order to do that, we need to have council members and have the political will to prioritize the budget in the correct manner that provides for a safe city. A couple of things that we also need to think about is some innovative techniques. We need to, and this is 2016, we need to think about some of them, the new trends that we have out there. There's some camera capabilities. There's some camera capabilities, these size body cameras that could be used in high-crime areas. We've had a number of homicides, and a couple of those could have been prevented, or at least we would have known a lot more than we had cameras in these high-crime areas. Also, we need to think about predictive analysis. We need to look at where crime is happening, know where the trends are, and try to prevent it before it actually starts happening. My idea on the gang injunction is it's okay as it is right now, unless there's some measured performance that we can change to make that. Thank you.
Thank you. Al, do you want me to repeat the question? Yes, Al.
Oh, I'm good, thank you. First of all, my neighborhood was the first neighborhood in the city that had to plan a program for the gang injunction. It worked very well, it still works, I'm told support it, we need to expand it throughout the city. But more important than that, there's been reductions over the years in our police staff due to budget cuts. If you look at sixteen, seventeen budget, it's still probably lower than it was five years ago. So we need to give the police department the funding to increase or replace the lack of staffing that is missing right now. We could use another fifteen, twenty patrol officers, if that's needed. Another thing we need to do is have the city council or the next council members replace that sixteen million dollars they took from the measure of money that's supposed to be used to enhance services, which was intended for youth programs. That was number two in the prior list that was sent to us years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, same question here.
I think it's also important to remember that 2011 saw the issuance of Prop 47, which lowered felonies to misdemeanor, which could also be attributed to the rise of crime, not only in Oxnard but statewide. So it's not just a local issue, it's a statewide issue that we all need to address. What I would like to see is more partnership between the police department and neighborhoods and communities, whether it's a community watch system or just community-oriented policing in general. I think that would definitely do a lot to further that relationship between the community that the police serve and the communities that need the police. Moreover, I would definitely like us to revisit the Oxnard Police Department's Police Explorer Program. That's definitely been a tool to get younger folks, isolated college students into the police pipeline, so that we do already able to staff these positions as they become open. And as far as the gang injunction, I definitely think it's worth, so we should definitely revisit it, maybe upgrade it as a.
Okay. Daniel, same question to you on public safety.
So I think we can all agree that public safety is important to all of us. As residents, we want to feel safe in our communities, businesses want to feel safe in their communities. We need to look at, first, trying to get the levels in our public safety that we need. We need more officers, we need more support staff, we need to replace outdated equipment. Once we get these three things done, we can look into how we can build a better relationship between the police and the public. Outreach, as well as community policing. We also, like Ms. Flores-Hiro said, the Police Explorer Program, which is tailored to the youth. Many of the times, the crime is being committed by our youth because there is a lack of recreational activities in our city. We have the largest young population of youth, but yet, we're not capitalizing on it. So we need to look into that and capitalize on that. As far as the gang injunction, I agree with Mr. Velazquez, we need to extend it citywide.
Thank you. David, you're up next. Same question about what would you do on the council to decrease the, or to reduce the amount of crime and about the gang injunction?
What I mentioned prior, myself being the best candidate up here in order to really represent the needs of the city residents and local small businesses, as I'm a local small business for many, many years in the city, is the reason why I'm running today, because most of the candidates up here don't know the root cause of crime in our city, as a few of the police officers in the back might attain that. Most crime in our city is committed by people that are either under the influence of drugs or have mental health issues. A lot of that stems from youth not having these youth diversion programs I've been talking about for a while. So if we create more youth diversion programs, and we work, we build that, we bridge that gap between the law enforcement and the community and the children, then we'll cure this issue in the city of Oxnard. Not all the police officers nor resources in the world will fix this issue. The gang injunction should not be in the city of Oxnard after we've proven to ourselves as a community that it's not needed anymore.
Thank you. Brian, we've wrapped up, but Brian, you're next.
Thank you. In this last budget cycle, the police department lost about a million dollars in financial support. Fifteen sworn positions and eleven non-s sworn positions were eliminated. That's why I didn't support that budget, because of the detrimental effect of it upon public safety. We need to replace the funding, we need to replace the positions of the police department, we need to reinvigorate our community-oriented policing and problem-solving program. Right now, if you call from Mount Burden's College, it could be up to three or four hours before you get a police officer to show up at your house. That's unacceptable. You need to be able to get police service in a timely manner, you need to have faith in your police, that they'll do the work you need them to do. And by releasing B Coordinator to allow them to problem-solve in your local neighborhoods, we can stop the problem before they start, before they ask us. That was the whole idea of that plan, we're not doing it. So we need to strengthen those relationships back in our local neighborhoods, put faith of the community back into the police department, just so the community knows what belongs and what doesn't belong. The police department's the tools to help them.
Thank you, Brian. Enrique, same question to you.
Yes, the question is not whether, who is causing the crime, who is doing the crime? The question is, how do you motivate the police chief and the police department personnel to go out into the community and reduce the crime rate? If you elect me as your next city council member, I promise you that one of the first things I'm gonna do, we're gonna sit down with the police chief, and we're gonna tell him to bring to us a plan with an expected completion date, when he expects the crime to go down. If the crime doesn't go down, but from what the time that he said he was gonna bring it down, we're gonna cut the budget. That'll be a motivator. We're gonna cut the budget by one-third, yes, cut the budget by one-third to see if that will motivate him. If that doesn't work, we're gonna go ahead and ask the city manager, recommend to the city manager to fire the police chief and get somebody more competent. We need to have competence in here. This is a job, this is a life of our citizens, where somebody needs to stand up and say what needs to be done.
Thank you. No thoughts, thank you, Eric. And Eric, we'll go to you and pass the break that mic a little closer if you can.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear?
Can you hear me now?
All right.
The number one purpose of government is probably safety. It doesn't matter about much of anything else, it doesn't matter what type of schools you have or parks you have, if you're not safe, go to them, nothing else really matters. So that's the guy that I'm probably gonna do. I think we can use neighborhood watch programs more effectively to increase our safety, but just to give you some perspective here, we have two-hundred-and-thirty-seven officers today, same as we did in 2005. We have ten percent increase in population, we have an eighteen percent increase in calls since that time. Our crime rate's gone from twenty-one per thousand back in 2011 to about thirty-six per thousand now. It's a really big drop. I think that if we focus on bringing in more business into town, the tax revenues that we can generate from additional business coming to town is what we need to pay for additional police. I think that's what we need to do.
And do you want to comment on the gang injunction?
I think it's broken, so why not?
Okay, very good candidates. Let's move on to the next question. Enrique, we're gonna be our first on this one. Enrique, do you support Measure M, which is the measure to repeal the recent wastewater increases? Yes or no, it can be asked. And then also discuss with us your vision for the wastewater plant and the infrastructure. How would you pay for it if Measure M passes and if it doesn't? And also, I'd ask you to put the mic a little closer as well, Enrique.
Yes, I support the reduction in utility rates. I truly believe that coming back to the corruption and mismanagement of city funds that have been going on for years by the city, various city councils, we need to stop the corruption, we need to stop the mismanagement, we need to stop hiring incompetent department managers, we need to do, the city needs to do more with less. By doing those things, there will not be any need to continue to tax our citizens. This is a city council that likes to tax, 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 and mismanage money. I'm gonna put a stop to that. I promise you that if I get elected, we're gonna look at the budget on a bifurcated basis and make changes that need to be taken care of. As to infrastructure, it goes back again to the money that's gonna be coming up as a result of stopping the corruption and mismanagement of money. We're gonna have, there's plenty of money. If we run financially the same better, there's plenty of money to take care of.
Thank you, Enrique. David, same question to you. David, do you support Measure M? Yes or no? And what's your vision about the wastewater plant? How would you pay for it if Measure M passes?
So I feel a lot of us are on the same boat in here when I speak and say that I spend more on Starbucks a week than I would on our water, on our utility bills going up every month. So another example I can give is when I walk into a ninety-nine cent store, nothing's ninety-nine cents any longer, it's a dollar twenty-nine, a dollar forty-nine, a dollar ninety-nine. Our city hasn't raised our rates adequately in years. For every dollar that we spend as a city, we're collecting seventy-five cents. So if I had a business and I was putting out a dollar and receiving seventy-five cents, I'd go bankrupt really, really quickly. It doesn't make any sense. It was put together for a political agenda, and that's the only reason it was implemented. So I'm against Measure M.
And how would you pick the wastewater plant?
There's other divisions of the city where we can improve and make a little more resourceful in order to save some money and possibly pay for those upgrades.
Thank you, David. Next is Jack. What's your position on Measure M and also your vision for the wastewater plant?
My position on Measure M is I'm against Measure M. I see the wastewater plant as the kidney of the city. And if I had a loved one who had a problem with their kidney, I would go to any expense to fix it. I believe that the residents, this is gonna be a bitter pill for them to take, of rates, no one likes rates hikes, but I believe it's gonna probably hurt the businesses more. Residents are gonna adjust to their budgets, they'll probably spend less on dining, one less pizza a month, they might not go to the show, they might buy a hundred-dollar shoes instead of a hundred-and-fifty-dollar shoes. So I believe it might hurt the business in the long run, but I believe it's the responsibility of the council to make sure that the city lives in a safe and reliable infrastructure.
Thank you. Oscar, same question to you.
Measure M, I am against Measure M. Simply put, water is an essential need for this city. Fortunately, yes, we are in a very difficult situation. I can clearly understand. The rates will affect everyone in this city. However, we all use the water, we all need the water regardless of how or why we are in the situation that we are in. We need water, and we are just leaving a bill if Measure M were to pass for our future. Nothing's gonna be resolved. Eventually, the water issue, we're just pushing it back for future generation. If Measure M were to pass, some way, somehow, we do need to find that funding, be it cutting straight through every single department or a particular department, but eventually, we do need that extra money to fund our water.
Thank you. Brian, same question to you. Do you support Measure M? Yes or no? And what's your vision of paying for the wastewater plant? And what's your vision about maintaining the wastewater plant?
No, I don't support Measure M. I understand Mr. Star's approach on that, everyone has a right to redress their grievances against the government. I appreciate that. My problem is, this whole process is, I don't think we stole the rate increase in the appropriate fashion to begin with. I don't think we informed the public. I don't think we had a good game plan to really show the taxpayer what their money was gonna be used for if the rates did go up. I was also a little concerned with, I think it's close to a sixty-five percent increase over five years, but it's still a huge increase. Just recently, we had an internal memo circulated that said, you know, we're gonna be laid off for like the nine-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars worth of water, these speeds, because some of the meters weren't functioning right, we didn't have the staff to go out and double-check them. We need to fix that. We need to clean our own house first, get it right. Do we need a rate increase? Absolutely. Is our infrastructure failing? It certainly is. But we need to make sure that we do it in a fiscally proper manner to make sure you're getting what you paid for.
Thank you, Brian. Eric? Eric? Same question to you. Do you support Measure M? Yes or no? What's your vision for that? If Measure M passes?
Yeah, I'd definitely favor Measure M. I think an eighty-seven percent rate increase is just a waste of the city. The city thinks it's lavish, they wanna spend six-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars on the capital expenditure program, five-hundred-and-twelve million to invest for a brand-new sewer treatment plant, when they have their own numbers say that they can fix it, the existing line for between seventy-five and eighty-one dollars. This is just plain abusive. City staff, hold on thirty seconds. Back in September of 2014, city staffs put out a report and said they can fix everything with a six percent rate increase. And then they hired a consultant, who came up with this dream plan, and that consultant gets the bid on the engineering work that's done. This is just a real loss. We should pass Measure M, get beyond there, and I'll negotiate for a rate, for the right rate structure that works. And I'm out, I'm back, I can talk about this later.
Orlando, same question to you.
Thank you. I'm coming up on my second year on the planning commission, so I use the experience that I've gained from that, plus my twenty years of budget experience. No, I do not support Measure M, and for the following reasons. It creates a three-million-dollar hole in our budget, which would have to be filled either with Measure O or general funds or straight cuts across the budget to fill that. It also, if we don't repair the systems that are failing, we risk the chance of sewage leaking into the ocean, and how I would fund it, and finally, if we pass Measure M, we're going to weaken our position on our bonds. I would fund it through, if I had to, it would be a straight across the budget cuts and drain Measure O, because we have to fund it, otherwise, we're gonna, our bonds will be degraded.
Same question to you.
You know, as a matter of public health and public safety, I'm firmly against Measure M. Water is like oil and gas, you know? And, you know, unfortunately, with the rates not being increased as they should have been, and with the onset of the drought, this is even more apparent. So for that, I cannot support Measure M. You know, if, the other part of why I cannot support Measure M is that there's no plan thereafter. If Measure M passes, and then what? What I've also been reading and seeing is that if Measure M passes, you know, there's a good chance that the state could even find the city, which would cost us even more money, and we also detrimental to any hopes of bringing that wastewater plant up to code. You know, if it were to pass, you know, we definitely have to look elsewhere in the budget, because as I mentioned, this is a necessity, and water is like.
Steve, same question to you.
Thank you. I oppose Measure M because we have a crumbling infrastructure. I've been to the wastewater treatment plant, and we're talking about wastewater, and that plant has just fallen apart. What we need to do is we need to fund the repair, maintenance, and operation. We need to fix what's broken, because if we don't, we do run the risk of putting raw wastewater into the ocean, and we'll get fined a lot more. We also need to make sure we cover our bond covenant for this. But this is one of the reasons why I ran for city council, because when we were talking about this wastewater issue, and Mr. Nyhoff came to our neighborhood council, I talked to him, and I said, why are we trying to pay for everything in the first year? We need to make sure that we're reasonable and rational about the first couple of years. We do have to, we understand we have to pay for the crumbling infrastructure, but one, you're not telling us what we're really getting, and two, why do we have to pay for everything in the first year? So there'll still be a procto if Measure M passes. So there'll still be a Prop 2 if Measure M passes. We have to go through another Prop 28 process. And so if I'm elected, I know what we need to do so that we can take care of our crumbling infrastructure and still make sure that we're safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And there wasn't enough in the budget to get more dollars, so I have a mic again. And we're gonna move on now. And Daniel, same question.
All right, so, can you hear me now? So the thing that we need to understand is that Measure M has no end plan. It sounds nice. We all don't wanna pay more in our rates, but the reality is that we are now having to clean up the mess that past two decades, city council and management messed up. They refuse to raise the rates at the reasonable times. Now we're trying to play catch-up. Unfortunately, the residents are getting gouged with this, but it's something that needs to be done and I encourage every single resident to go out to our wastewater facility, check that out. Also, take a look at the Thousand Oaks wastewater facility and compare the two. They are night and day. Last thing I wanna mention is that there is no cutting budgets. You need a majority vote and I doubt any city council majority is gonna vote to do that. I can't fire anybody other than the city manager and the attorney.
Al, we're gonna wrap up the question with you. Yes, Al? And the question again, what's your position on Measure M?
I can't understand.
What is your position on Measure M? Yes or no? And how would you fund the wastewater plant?
If you're referring to the wastewater initiative, I would support that initiative which is Measure M, I believe. But the fact of the matter is here, we're not opposed to a wastewater increase. It's excessive rate water increase. Well, basically, what we oppose is the rate increase that they've given us is not based on actual cost of service. That's the biggest problem I have with it. Now presently, we owe about four-hundred-million dollars in obligation, water wastewater. You add another seven-hundred-million dollars, that's about one-point-one-billion dollars. Al, you try to figure out what the interest payment on that annually for twenty-five years will be on top of the principal we can afford. What we need to do is spend the money, reduce the rate increase by, increase by five or ten percent straight across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, candidates, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Orlando, you're gonna be up first on this question. Let's talk a little bit about your philosophy, your way of dealing with things. We know that, given the poor management, the financial problems of the city, that there's been an erosion of trust and confidence in the city staff and the council. So if you were elected, how would you restore trust and confidence in the city council and the staff? And would you be accountable? Or we could just push it off and say that happened before your watch?
I would rely on the twenty-first years I spent in the military. And while in the military, I was a management analyst and I'm familiar with total quality management. And these are techniques that are used to improve poor management. But the primary thing that I would do is listen to the public. First, listen to the public and then respond to them. Make sure that any questions that they ask, I answer. I wouldn't pass the buck. I'm not afraid to take positions that may cost me an election and I may not get reelected, but I'm willing to do the right thing at the right time. And that's how I think we take turns with someone's trust. It's gotta be earned. Thank you.
Daniel, you're up next. How would you restore trust and confidence in staff and council?
So I think the first thing that we need to do, and when you're campaigning, you're meeting so many different people and the same concerns always seem to come up, is transparency. And the reports being as simple as possible that any person can understand it. We all know the history. For the past two decades, city council and management has not been so transparent. Reports that come to the city council or to the residents is so confusing that nobody can really truly understand it. Our first step that we should do is work with the public, work with our management team so that we are able to be transparent in the process. Everybody, I'm pretty sure, has heard of the Three One One app that Oxnard rolled out. When you submit a ticket, it tells you. When it gets received, it tells you. We need to have a process that's like that, that we know exactly what we are doing as a city so that there is no smoke and mirrors, full transparency across the board.
Thank you. Enrique, same question to you as far as restoring confidence and trust in the city. How would you do that?
Yes, the first thing that I would go about is the reason that we don't have your trust right now is because we don't have representation by special districts. I support the election of the mayor and the city council by special district. Secondly, we need to have term limitations for the mayor and the city council. That is one of the reasons, major reasons, we have corruption, we have mismanagement funds because these people keep getting reelected, they get too confident in their positions and they lose sight of what they're there for. Okay? If they want public service, they oughta go in there and make things happen. So by creating special districts and term limitations, I believe that we can get the city back to a very efficient power machine.
Thank you. Al, same question to you. It was, given the poor financial and other management failures in the past, how will you restore trust and confidence of the people in the city? Will you be accountable to the people?
Forgive me again, but you sound awful, awful, and I really can't, me and Eric, I have a hard time.
Could one of the other candidates tell Al the question?
Repeat the question.
So the question, Al, are you able to hear me in the audience? It's probably the way the speakers are aligned. So Al, the question is, how will you restore trust and confidence in the city, in the staff? If you're elected, how will you restore confidence and trust in the staff and the council?
Okay, I got the question down. That's a good question. First of all, we lose confidence, so you're gonna have to demonstrate that you're gonna listen to them. I think the biggest problem we've had presently, staff, they're afraid to come forward to their supervisors. I've heard that repeatedly throughout the whole city. So how do you restore trust? That's a tough one. I think one of the biggest, easiest ways to do is to get better staff leadership, managers, or, you know, this has been going on for years. They talked about putting a whistleblower program, implemented whistleblower program where employees can come and address a problem without getting fired. So again, that's gonna be a tough, long issue to try to resolve. It's not gonna be resolved overnight.
Thank you, Brian. Same question to you.
Don't take this personally. You sound like a Charlie Brown person.
That's a first. I'll start telling you.
Okay, thank you. You know, we need to take ownership of the position we're in and whether you say it happened ten years ago or twenty years ago, to me, it's really not material because in the here and now, we have to deal with it. So let's move straight ahead, be able to identify the problem and move forward. Understand that this is a team effort here. I don't do anything as an individual. Council doesn't do anything as individuals. We have to do it as a team and be responsive to each other. But we need to have that open-door policy that allows people to come in and make comments. If they criticize us, that happens, we need to deal with it. A lot of times, we're never gonna make a decision that's gonna satisfy a hundred percent of people. We just have to try and follow our heart. That's what I do. I follow my heart. I try and make the absolute best decision I can based on what I believe is best in my community. That's why we do this. It's very, very difficult. We need the city to be able to trust us and we need to restore that faith in the workers, the management, and the council.
Steve, same question to you.
I think there's a couple of components to return trust and confidence into the city. First is trust in me. Accountability comes and starts with me first. Have to be open, honest, responsive, transparent. Have to have an open-door policy. You have to make sure that you treat everyone with dignity and respect and there has to be decorum on the dials. You may disagree, but you disagree in a civil manner. A couple of other things is when we talk about confidence and restoring confidence, we need to get more input from the staff members. They're smart. They're really smart folks. We need to get their input. Public, you're smart. Some of you have advanced degrees. It doesn't matter what your education is, you know what's going on and we need your input. On the planning commission, we have meetings where we have no one in the audience and we're looking for public input. So we'd like to have some more public input. And finally, I like to follow the management by walking about here. And you go around and you talk to the folks and you find out what's going on in the staff and then you'd be able to build confidence that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jack, you're up.
Yes, I believe there should be transparency and with transparency comes speed. There should be a development of checks and balances within the department and also accountability. There also should be maybe an update or a development of code of conduct within the department and someone responsible for everything that goes on in the finance.
Thank you. Eric, you're up next.
I think the first thing is don't make promises you can't keep because that happens online at city hall. We try to be a full-service city. The reality, we're a no-service city. We try to do so many things, so many tasks, we just don't do them well. We need to focus on the basics. We need to focus on making sure we have public safety along. We need to make sure that we have roads and infrastructure taken care of. I think that we need to have definitely more transparency. I would like to see every single check, contract, art, and request for proposal on the website. I think people should be able to see all of it so that you can see where your money is actually going. We need accountability as well. We have goals that don't mean anything, it's involved, because they're not specific, they're not measured, they're not relevant, they're not time-based. So we need to create accountability and in my position as a manager, I underscore.
You know, my philosophy on creating trust is, you know, going out and knocking on doors and meeting the people who live in the community. I believe that there's no better experience than the lived-in experience and, you know, as your next city council member, I definitely would have that policy of, you know, "Come talk to me." Let's have council on the corner, like I'll set up on Starbucks on Fifth Street and you and I will talk about what's going on in your neighborhood. I definitely think there needs to be more engagement between the council and the INCO, quite frankly. And again, show me, don't tell me. And I would show you by showing up to as many as I could. I know that there's forty, but definitely try doing those conversations and creating that trust that way and being there and being here because at the end of the day, as your city council member, you know, we'll be beholden to the residents in the long run, so why don't we, you know, start that dialogue and start by listening?
Thank you. David, we'll wrap up with you.
I really feel that you need to talk the talk and walk the walk. One of the core reasons we have city councils and a mayor in place is because the city needs leadership. And with leadership comes planning and comes action. I once heard from a wise man one day, a failure to plan is a plan to fail. I think that's a little bit incorrect sometimes because even if you plan, if you don't take any action, you're not gonna get anywhere. So the core belief of mine is that if we take action on what we say and we walk the walk, we will restore trust in the people and the community in the city of Oxnard because they will see that we're leading the city and we're gonna run into obstacles, into speed bumps. But if longer we're taking action and we're being completely transparent with each other, we will take action and move the city in the right direction.
So audience, what we think is happening is you're able to hear me because of where the speakers are, but the candidates cannot. So with your indulgence, I'm gonna review the question and I'm also gonna step aside and read it to them as well. So this next question, and Genevieve, you'll be first, is about the city infrastructure, the maintenance. The city is in extreme need of repairs such as sidewalks, tree trimming, alley cleanups, and especially the streets. So what do you plan to do to address these issues and where will the money come from?
Candidates, the question is, the city is in extreme need of repairs such as sidewalks, tree trimming, alley cleanups, and especially the streets. What do you plan to do to address these issues and where will the money come from?
I think when we're thinking specifically with the streets, the current council has, you know, started doing that work on, you know, fixing the potholes. As someone who lives and works in Oxnard, trust me when I tell you, I drive these streets, I'm very aware of the streets and where the bumps are and I'm also aware of the construction that's taking place. I think there's definitely much more that needs to be done. I definitely think that, you know, should Measure A pass, that definitely gives the city some cushion to work with and with regards to the streets. And there's also that component of, you know, there's oversight to how this money's gonna be spent. So I think it's definitely something worth looking into if you haven't already. With regards to trees and sidewalks, you know, I've seen cases of other cities where they leave the neighborhood to the city, to the sidewalks and the trees. That's not functional, that's not possible. How am I, as a homeowner, you know, gonna go out there and have a roof uprooting a sidewalk and the city's not gonna take care of it? So that definitely also deserves another look.
Thank you. Enrique, same question to you.
Yes, the way that I would, I would add is the infrastructure is that, again, we're going back to the white corruption that we have in the city. It's very real. It's happening every day in the city of Oxnard. Secondly, we need to manage our finances better. By doing those things, those two things, we're gonna be able to get, to release more money, to use it, to do the other fixing that we need to do to our revenues and fees. One of the major things that I would propose if I get elected, that one of the first things that I would do is propose a citywide hiring freeze. We have a lot of debt. We need to cut, we need to cut, and we need to hire only those positions that are privately needed by each department. A hiring freeze is what we really need right now in order to, in order to get our finances better. Remember, the city of Oxnard is not an employment agency. Many people, many departments, many members of the city council want you to think that.
Thank you, Enrique. Eric, same question to you.
Didn't we pass Measure O back in two thousand and eight? We were told we'd get better services, we'd get our streets repaired. Isn't that the service? That brings up ten to twelve-hundred dollars a year. Somehow we still can't get our streets repaired. Other cities in this county don't have the extra access tax and somehow they seem to be better job. And that tells you that we have a lot of mismanagement, a lot of financial mismanagement. Seems like the only time I see streets being repaired feels like it's all like the last four or five months before election. And that's where I seem to get to see streets getting repaired. All of a sudden, there's a frenzy. So staff is not being held accountable for their performance. I don't think they're working at quite the pace that they need to as they do in other cities. I think that it's possible that, I don't know. But I can tell you that we need to focus authorities on our streets and we need to make sure that the money's spent properly.
Thank you. Jack, you're up next.
Yes, that's a big problem. I live in a neighborhood where, in an older neighborhood where the streets are probably a hundred years old and we have that problem of broken sidewalks and crumbling sidewalks and raised sidewalks. And to fix those throughout the city, even just my neighborhood, it's pretty daunting on all the work that has to be done on the streets and sidewalks. I believe that the base of this is to be financially responsible and to build our reserves in order to afford these items of the infrastructure.
Thank you. Orlando, do you need me to reread the question?
No, thank you. I would definitely rely on my two years of experience on the planning commission and twenty years of budget experience. I believe that the city of Oxnard is due funds from the state for them turning over such a dilapidated and poor Oxnard Boulevard to us. Our Boulevard is no longer a highway. Our Boulevard is no longer a highway, it's now going to be the main flow, the main street that goes through our revitalized downtown. And we need to convert that. So they turned us, they gave us a really bad product and I think we owe its money. I would also look to receive funding from the county for the harbor because, once again, they did the same thing, turned over a very poor product to us. And I would seek other state and federal management funding.
Thank you. Oscar, same question.
Uh, yes, I'll begin with kind of answering previous questions simply because I was scared. But it shows you lead by example. I could sit here and promise everything or anything, fixing sidewalks, fixing streets, fixing alleys. Because yes, it is a huge issue. You have certain neighborhoods, South Oxnard, Lemonwood, Colonia, where if you go in there, the alleys are horrible, the streets are bad. Sidewalks, I believe there's no common port, but they're in need of help. We need to look at this long-term though. We cannot just be going around the city fixing sidewalks, fixing streets here and there. By the time we finish, by the time we begin and finish, guess what? It's time to start all over again. We need to look at this as a long-term solution. We need to look at traffic, we need to look at public transportation. We need to look at getting the neighborhoods involved, being responsible for the sidewalks, their alleys. You can't just have any people leave trash, so on and so forth, behind your house.
Thank you. Riley, same question.
Thank you. And there's some question that the city has not maintained the streets the way they should have for a long time. The sad part is that it's not going to come up overnight. There are some districts in the city that have landscape maintenance districts or neighborhoods in the city that have landscape maintenance districts or facilities districts. And I think that's one option to utilize that money. But I think where we fall short on that is we don't reach out to the neighborhoods and talk to them and say, here's the amount of money that you have available. What is really your priority in your neighborhood? And that's the important end-use part of this is we need to provide the service to the communities, their money, they should have a say-so on what we're doing. And I think we've been resistive to reach out and talk to them in that manner. We need to think outside the box in terms of tree trimming and everything else. We have one tree for the entire city. There should be an opportunity where if people untrick trees themselves, they can do it with an arborist advice, we should allow them to do that. We shouldn't have that to answer.
Steve, you're up next. Same question about city maintenance, the repair of the city's sidewalks, tree trimmings, alleys. Where would you get planning saved?
Thank you. Oxnard is a full-service city. We are acting like we're a small village though. We have 203,000-plus people. We should be acting like a large or mid-sized city. We need to make sure that we prioritize our budget once we get our fiscal house in order. And we need to have a council member that understands the big picture and how to prioritize infrastructure, like I did when I was in charge of the Neighborhood Surface Warfare Center. I'd make sure that all the facilities were restored to design specification. It's not just streets, but it's also lights in parks, which are very dangerous if you have no lights in the park, things like that. So a couple of ways that you can get money out of the budget is to get rid of some of the wasteful practices that we have. I've done some process improvement measures and been able to save millions of dollars by just finding waste and getting rid of it. And finally, Oxnard 311 is a wonderful tool on your smartphone that can help us identify infrastructure issues. Thank you.
Thank you. David, you're up next.
So if you keep doing the same thing over and over and over, or you keep electing the same people over and over and over again, you're probably going to get the same results, right? Uh, I like telling stories. It really connects with people. And just yesterday, I had a friend call me like, dude, dude, you have to come to M Street and Channel Islands right now. So I race on over there, trying not to get a citation. And I get there, there's an older couple in the street with a wheelbarrow mixing cement with the shovel, putting it in front of their home on the pavement. That shows you there the severity of this issue. They told me that for the past 25 years that they've lived there, they've been complaining, calling, trying to get a response, trying to get some help, and they haven't been able to. All you can really do at the end of the day is change things and hope for a different result. But if you don't change anything, you're probably never going to get a different result.
Thank you. Al, you're up next. Same question.
Well, as, as was mentioned, the measure of funds have been misused, they've been transferred to the general fund, which that would not be intent for the measure of funds. Another thing that we deep, I want to consider is increasing the traffic, developing traffic fees. That would generate more revenue, but not for that. Another thing that I've said earlier has been ignored repeatedly. This, this city, leaders, the present leadership has neglected to draw and bring in good industries, good high-paying industries that generate millions of millions of dollars annually into our general fund. Why they do that is beyond me. It's, to me, it's unthinkable. Here, the city is almost broke, it's yet. We have people on the, on the present council who just insist of stopping certain industries that are generating revenue. And it just doesn't make sense. So again, a little bit of some of the things that need to be done.
And Daniel, we'll wrap up with you.
So at the beginning of the year, I, on my own, went out to all the department heads to set up meetings and find out what exactly was going on with our city. One of those meetings was meeting with the public works director. The sad reality is, yes, we have been making some attempts to repave the roads. The sad reality is that we don't have the funds. And even with Measure AA on the county tax, we still don't have enough funds to pave every road in our city. That's the sad reality. Whether the mismanagement in the past, you know, I agree with Councilman McDonald, it's time for us to put it in the past. I also agree with Mr. Albanese. Expecting new results with the same attempts won't give you new results. You'll still get the same results each and every time. As far as the tree trimmers, to my knowledge, we only have two. In the largest city, in Ventura County, we only have two tree trimmers. That's unacceptable. Hiring freeze is not the answer. We need to beef up our staff levels. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to start with Steve on the next question. So the question is about growth. We haven't talked about growth in housing yet tonight. So what do you believe candidates should be the right amount of growth? Do you support a moratorium because of the drought? And what would you do about overcrowding and parking in many neighborhoods?
Our candidates, the question is, what do you believe is the right amount of growth in the city? Do you believe we should have a moratorium on growth because of the severe drought? And what do you think we should do about overcrowding and parking in our neighborhoods? Steve, if you're ready, you're up.
Oxnard doesn't have enough housing. My own? Yeah. Oxnard doesn't have enough housing right now. It's barely impacted. We need to make sure that we have an opportunity to find some other ways to get housing. We need to be smart about growth. We need to make sure that it's sustainable. And we need to make sure that we put it in the right way that it's designed. Greenhouse, different programs like that. We are in a drought, but I've asked the city planning director, every time a housing project comes before the planning commission, we ask, why are we building in the middle of the drought? And what actually has happened is the city has created an initial water plan to forecast if they were completely built out, would we have enough water for the city? And right now, we, we have plenty of water, as they say. We're at 50% capacity.
Yes, I'll stop there. Thank you. Al, do you need me to repeat the question?
Al, the question is, what do you believe is the right amount of housing in the city of Oxnard? Do you think we should have a moratorium because of the drought? And what would you do about overcrowding and parking in neighborhoods?
Well, first of all, your growth factor, as mentioned, you need to really look at the whole picture. Can we afford to have another one? Do we have a longer one? No. Do we have the infrastructure present before it? They saw what we're having, the wastewater department's falling apart. So no. We can't overfeel. I think we need to have what's called controlled growth. As years ago, the Ventura County Motor Supply Advisors voted for a moratorium, but not totally all the building, they just locked 25% of the building annually from the previous two years. That's still growth down. No. As far as overcrowding, that's a tough one. You need more affordable housing, you need more housing to handle. But as far as, when you have overcrowding, you have a lot of problems. You have market issues, you have, I mean, it goes on and on. But as far as overcrowding, you create, well, we have in our neighborhoods, we had what you call permitted parking. It's not the right solution because as far, once you have overcrowding, it, it just creates so many problems, traffic, noise, overcrowding, so. We have to limit the growth to some extent.
Thank you. Riley, do you need me to repeat the question? Thank you.
You need to have some sort of growth in the community to keep the economy moving forward. Doesn't mean it has to be unrestrained, uncontrolled around the hour, but there needs to be some sort of growth. And this kind of goes back to the economic garden I talked about earlier, which talks about finding businesses that are successful, helping them grow, and that creates some of the growth you're looking for. We need affordable housing stock. The average vacancy rate is very, very low. There are not enough affordable homes for people to live in. But people are here, they need to be able to address that. That's what causes overcrowding. When you get two, three, four families in one house with their vehicles, there's nowhere to park on the street, there's, it's just absolute chaos. So we need the affordable housing stock. We need to look at other ways of protecting our land resources. The AWP is one of those. We're taking 17 million ounces of water that we were throwing out in the ocean. We're now reutilizing that, putting it into the farm agriculture area so that we can take the potable water that we're using, it's even in our drainage system. Stuff like that to be followed.
David, you're up next.
So I know there's a way to actually create controlled growth in our city. They're talking about overpopulation, many families in a single household, and no parking on our streets, yet many of our streets don't allow us to build driveways or cut into our sidewalks in order to create that driveway, that extra space that many households want to create, and the city doesn't allow it. There's several issues here. I've heard a lot of talk within our city council and a lot of the members have been in for many, many years and have talked and not walked. I keep coming back to this because, once again, if we keep doing the same thing over and over again and they don't really know the community, they can't properly represent it, they can't properly grow, and they can't address the issues that are really at hand. The root cause of many, many of these issues are very different from what most of these candidates even think it really is because they don't really know the actual communities that we have here in the city of Oxnard and they don't know the residents.
Thank you. And up next is Daniel.
So we're speaking with a lot of the residents, we can all agree that housing is out of control right now. Do I believe we need low-income housing? Yes. But for every development that comes in and say that there is 75 units, only eight of those are actually low-income housing. Currently, right now, with current enrollment numbers with the Oxnard Elementary School District, they need three additional schools. With the current enrollment numbers, you mean to tell me that once we start adding more development into our city, that we are going to have enough school space? We have four elementary school districts and they can barely handle their current enrollment numbers. I believe in development, but I strongly believe in responsible development. And we need more development that comes into our city that is well-paying jobs for our residents. Thank you.
Orlando, you're up next.
Thank you. I'd rely on my planning commission experience and three years on the neighborhood council. I think that what we need to do is stick to the 2030 plan. The 2030 plan is budgeted out. It's a measured amount of growth that everyone has agreed upon. The only caveat is that we limit any specific plan amendments because those are the things that push those units that we assume we were going to build up as what we would get. I would also encourage the, the use of the SOARS initiative because SOARS, with, with using SOARS, we can identify to all developers what areas we want developed. So that would limit development. And drought measurements that the city has taken, that's taken hold, and we're pretty good right now given the order of the grass, but we need to stay vigilant with that. And I would definitely look to use the recycled sewage water for watering all the green spaces that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. And Oscar, you're up next. Again, the question's about how to grow. What would you do as far as the drought, the moratorium? And what would you do about overcrowding and parking issues?
Okay. I would focus on smart growth. Realistically, if we're going to build something, how is it going to look in 20 to 30 years? We need more housing. Living in La Colonia, I know that if I need to park on the street, good luck, I'm probably going to park a block away. I understand that there are multiple families living in a household. It's just, in ways, it's just an economic system that we have currently in the city. But we need to focus on smart growth and building, getting the most bang for our buck in building stuff. The overcrowding, eventually, yes, I think we need more housing. And we need more affordable housing, therefore it'll get rid of some of the overcrowding in our neighborhoods.
Enrique, you're up next. Pull the mic up on the little clock speaker.
Yes, the, we really, the city really does not need to build more housing. The real solution is, we need to allow the city of Ventura to make legal granny flats or additions in, in, in single residence, single-family residence. There's a lot of people who would like to have that. I have spoken to various hundreds of, of citizens and they would like somebody in the city council to work hard for them, to, to, to make it legal to build your own addition in your house. Everybody would win, they would have income, there would be more income to spend in the city, and the city would make money by, by, through the, through the parks. Secondly, the parking. I have an idea on how to, how to fix the parking problem. Allow certain homeowners who wish to build a driveway in front of their homes to, 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 to have them so that, so that they will have more parking inside rather than parking in the streets. That's what, that's what we need to do. We need to have, allow the state, our, our homeowners to build more parking inside the property.
Thank you. Jack, you're up next.
Uh, yes. The city obviously is going to be growing and right now, the condition is that we have a lot of overcrowded streets, we have two, three families in one home. So obviously, we need low and affordable housing in the city. And how fast that grows is, is a big question that I, I would like to see it match the growth of how we repair our infrastructure. I believe if we grow too fast, we put too much stress on the, on the infrastructure. But yeah, affordable housing on forward.
Okay. Thank you. Erin, we'll go to you next. Same question.
The reality is that people need a place to live. If you don't build houses, you're just going to be overcrowded in the existing housing stock. So as much as I think we all like the idea of not having any more homes, the reality is you'll have more people anyway. I think our problem though is that we really need to focus on building higher-end homes. We have lots of very cheap homes in the city. Those are very overcrowded, the streets are, are overcrowded there. If you actually build higher-end homes, you actually create more affordable housing. And here's why. During your life, you typically start off with a starter house and usually you'll move a few miles away from you live, where you live and you go to higher-end homes. A lot of people move into higher-end homes so that you can bring in more of the older homes onto the market for people who are just starting out in life. I think in the end also, we need to increase the number of jobs, businesses that are in town so people can afford to have the incomes that they need in order to move into other homes there. We need to...
Thank you. Genevieve, we'll wrap up.
Wrapping up with Genevieve. Hi. Make sure we're still. Good evening. Hello. Sorry. So I mean, I think with regards to housing, what we need to do is, you know, there's absolutely a housing shortage here in the city of Oxnard. And to supplement that, you know, we need to be smart about our goal, we need to make sure that if we are going to, the normal is that we don't lose our ad, you know, identity, which to me is very integral to who we are as a city. We are, you know, the city of Oxnard, Starbuck, that's... We are, you know, the city of Oxnard, Starburst Castle. To that end, I think downtown revitalization efforts definitely have the potential to alleviate some of these housing shortages, where we can work with developers to have mixed-income houses, workforce housing, high-end housing, so to speak, and there's definitely opportunity there. We just need to, again, work with the folks that are interested in revitalizing our downtown area.
Thank you.
And also just incentivizing also homeownership, because if you look at the main funding streams for a city, it's sales tax and property tax, so if you're incentivizing folks to take routes, there'll be an additional bargaining revenue there.
Thank you. Brian, I'm going to start the next question with you. So, I'm actually going to combine a couple of questions here, because we're running out of time. I want to talk about the economy, and what would the candidates do to bring more businesses and better-paying jobs into Oxnard, and not necessarily one-stop-shop ideas, but how would they go out and appeal to businesses? What kind of incentives or anything would they give? And also, what's their view about downtown? Do they think more should be done to attract tourism, business, et cetera? Excuse me.
So, Jenny, the question is about the economy. What would we do to bring more businesses to Oxnard, better-paying jobs in Oxnard? We're not looking for Nancy Lekelaw, set up a one-stop-shop. How would you actually appeal to other businesses to come here? And also, what's your views about downtown? Do they could like, do anything to try and spur more affordable jobs, et cetera? Okay, Brian, you're up.
Thank you. One core point to my campaign is what I call economic gardening. That's where you go. And this is the realization that California, on many levels, is not a business-friendly state. So, we need to work with the businesses that are here, that have found ways to survive in our local area, and reach out to them and make them more profitable, more efficient, and help them to grow. Because as they grow, they're going to create the need for other industry to help support them. That's the whole concept of economic gardening. So you help them be successful, they bring in people, they bring in new employees. When you have new employees with disposable income, they spend it in the city, your tax base goes up, it's a win-win for everybody. Downtown needs some work. We have not worked very well downtown. We have not paid attention to it. We need to address a lot of issues downtown, including making a safe, walkable, livable community for our people to enjoy and attract people downtown.
Thank you. Steve, you're up next. Do you need me to repeat your question?
No, thank you. I have it. Thank you. I have feedback, though.
Go ahead and talk right into it.
What my plan would need to attract, retain, and enhance the city's businesses that we have, we need to attract the businesses by making sure that we improve our reputation as a city, and businesses want to come here. Under my leadership, we'll be a safe, well-run, clean, and business-friendly city. Some of the things that we need to do for those businesses is to look at some of the incentives. Right now, the only incentive we have is beautiful weather. How about some things like the first-year discount on your permits? How about making sure that the roads are fixed? I was at a business yesterday, and the road looks terrible in front. We have two thousand employees, and they're tripping over poplons going to work. As far as downtown, we had the Center for New Urbanism come here. They have a lot of great ideas. We need to look at those, adopt them perhaps. But we also want to look at making downtown good for our residents. Our residents are there, the businesses will come. Thank you.
Alex, do you need to repeat your question? You're up.
No, I'm good. Well, first of all, there is business out there, multimillion-dollar business out there just wanting to come to Oxnard. It'll give us over two million dollars a year. Again, we keep fighting to try and stop it. Another thing about downtown, first of all, as mentioned, you need to streamline the permits, lower the fees, but more important than that, you need to bring in some nightlife. Me and my wife, we go to Ventura by. We go to Santa Barbara at night. There's nothing in downtown after six. So you need to reinvent, reinvent, reinventigate, get ops downtown Oxnard with entertainment. Another thing you need to do is to make people feel safe in downtown Oxnard, restore the police storefronts we used to have. We used to have a storefront, a police station in downtown. They took it to the collections. Now, why didn't the collections, why didn't the city, the city mandated the collections supply their own patrol officers instead? They give them ours in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel, you're up next.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. So, Jenny, the question is about how would you bring in more business to the city of Oxnard, better-paying jobs? What do you think you should do to attract those businesses? And also, what do you think should happen to Oxnard?
So, the main thing when speaking with businesses, they talk about licensing and permit fees take are two to three times higher than the average in the county. The wait time is seven months or longer. So we need to streamline those two. We need to, you know, in the city of Oxnard, South Oxnard in particular, has many of the families working two to three jobs just to make it to the next one. We have the workforce, we have the residents, we have over two hundred and twenty thousand residents in the city of Oxnard. So any business that come here, they're not going to run out of the supply of employees. As far as the downtown Oxnard go, unfortunately, like, multiple parts in our city, it has been neglected, it has been forgotten, and it has fallen through the cracks. We have a plan, they have the money, and it's just a matter of executing it. And for whatever reason, we like to just sit on our hands and not really execute that.
Aaron, the same question.
We have the highest city business license cost in the entire county, about triple what you might pay elsewhere. That's your headline number, folks. You want to bring businesses into town, don't make it so expensive to come here. The real money, by the way, is not even in some business, it's in the sales tax, and it's property taxes they pay. So first of all, lower that dramatically, so we can bring businesses in. Also, permits simplicity. The city of Phoenix came up with a program where they empower architects and civil engineers to empower, to be empowered to self-certify that their plans, the building plans are compliant with the building code, and the city gets to audit that afterwards. An applicant can take that set of plans, go to city hall, get a permit that day. You can't do that here. It takes you months, sometimes never, to get a permit. So we've got to fix that, and there's just no time to discuss that.
Jack, you're up next.
Yes, just a little history of those people that have lived here quite a long while. If you remember the South Side, it was very vibrant. It had three restaurants that people from all over the city went to. They had Sal's, they had Yolanda's, they had Uncle Herb's. They had two major department stores, the Kmart and Mervyn's. They had a skating rink for the youth, they had a bowling alley for the youth, they had a movie theater for residents. They had employment in the South End, they had Vitro, they had Raytheon. There's no reason why Oxnard can't attract these businesses. With the beaches that we have, we can showcase our beaches, streamline our permits for the city, and with a multicultural city like Oxnard, there's no reason why we can't bring businesses into the city. And also, we need to improve our education.
Thank you. And. David, you're up next.
I'm going to keep it really simple for you guys. I'm going to keep it very simple for you guys. If we can't help our local small businesses grow, generate revenue, be profitable, employ our local residents, and show a proven business model for other companies or other business ventures to come into Oxnard, then there's no way we're going to be able to attract them. We can paint this beautiful picture, show a beautiful video about new urbanization in downtown area. We can do all of these different things. But to me, we have local business owners right over there, nightclub, bar, restaurant, coha owner, car salesman, attorneys, store owners. We have several people in here today, and that shows you that they need our help in order to let them operate and get rid of some of the red tape, so they can be profitable, they can continue to operate, so they can employ our local citizens and keep pushing forward in our city. That is the reality. There's no way for us to make it happen if we don't make it happen for our small business owners.
Oscar, you're up next.
We need to, obviously, show how beautiful the city is to incoming businesses. As previously stated, you know, we need to make it more business-friendly. We need to help our current small businesses. If we do want big businesses with high-paying jobs, we need to do two things. First, we need to improve our public safety. The stigma still is there for Oxnard, and I feel we need to improve that before we expect a big company. Also, we need to improve our local schools. We can build this big company, no one's going to want to come, no one's going to build, unless our schools are doing better. And lastly, downtown. I feel that there's a lot of work to do in downtown, but we can make downtown what Oxnard was once. We can make it safe, we can make it walkable, we could have people there every weekend and be walking.
Thank you.
Jenny?
So I'm very proud and naive to have worked for a number of local Oxnard businesses, and I'm a very big proponent on buying local when necessary. And so to that, and I definitely do support small businesses and the jobs that they create and the products that they do offer our city and its residents. To that end, you know, to incentivize these businesses, we are sitting on a hidden gem. I firmly believe that we have a blind capacity of over two hundred thousand folks here in the city, and so I would definitely let potential businesses that would want to take loot in Oxnard know that this is the community, that you're in its beach side, ten minutes from the beach, and definitely would have the city work with the local chamber to, again, incentivize these small businesses to come here. With regards to the downtown portion of this question, I would definitely piggyback on what I was saying. The last question is that you got to build the neighborhood there first, because part of why businesses don't take loot or if they're not super successful in the downtown area is because there's no traffic there, there's no foot traffic there. How do you create that, you create that way, building in the foot traffic by having a neighborhood and a strong neighborhood at that?
Thank you. Orlando?
Thank you. As a city councilman, I would advocate through business expos that are hopefully sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and local businesses to bring in new business. I would go out and make contact with new industries like high-tech or entertainment and try to attract them to our community. I would also encourage local businesses to be sponsors to new businesses. The downtown needs to, in my opinion, needs to be our culture and art center, it needs to be our entertainment center. I would look to bring back our Childress Museum, and I'd look to use some of the office space down there to create a museum for the local artists. And finally, the sub-police station in River Park and the collection is paid by the community of River Park, not the city.
Enrique, we'll wrap up.
Yes. I have a, I have a plan, I have a one-year plan to make the city of Oxnard an economic power. Through public partnerships, that will work together with other community groups, organizations, that train employees for the new industries that are going to come in. One of them is the Center for Employment Training. The other one is the Private Industry Council, the Ventura County Private Industry Council. They are the ones who are training new employees. I will utilize them in order to provide new labor, knowledge, with skill, to the new companies that are coming, that will be coming in. I will also allow, again, I will also work very hard to make granny flags throughout the city of Oxnard legal, so that people, homeowners can have their additions, and that will alleviate some, sometimes, the homelessness of people in the city of Oxnard. I think that too much money has been spent in the city of Oxnard, too much.
Thank you, Enrique. This will be the last question, and then we'll have the closing statements. And we've been hearing a lot from them as far as their policy positions. We've talked about public safety tonight, we've talked about the economy, city government, infrastructure. But I think maybe the right question to wrap up with is for them to tell us a little bit about themselves. They're basically applying for a job. You are the hiring committee, and so I'm going to ask the candidates to share with you a little bit about their experiences, or special abilities, or even hobbies. What makes them appropriate and should be hired for this job? Excuse me. So now, we're going to start with you. And you're all applying for a job, this is your hiring committee, and I'm going to ask you to talk about your special skills, or experiences, or hobbies, or interests. What special, what qualities do you have that should have you get hired for this job? Alex, we'll start with you. Are you ready?
Well, first of all, as I mentioned from the very beginning, I had to rush through it. I've had experience being a businessman. I've had a business for fifteen years. I've also was a member of the teachers' union, as I mentioned earlier. I negotiated contracts, which I dearly needed presently in Oxnard. I was a labor contract negotiator. As a trustee, I oversaw the expenditures from a local volunteer. What do I, I, over the years, as I mentioned earlier, I spent time with the youth programs, with my two sons, in baseball, Little League. I firmly believe, plus lack of here, there's a lack of business savvy, for simple words. I don't believe any of the council members presently have ever had a business and understand how to run a business. That's one of the things that gives me a edge. I've been in business for years. I understand business, and that would be one of my strong strengths. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, for thirty-eight years, I've served in one capacity or another, whether it was a union president at the workplace, whether it was with the community and working with the neighborhood council, whether it was volunteering my time on the committee, on subcommittee on ethics. I was also working with neighborhoods of the city, recruiting neighborhoods and bringing neighborhoods to the table so their voices could be heard. And I look to do that again as councilman and being engaged with the neighborhoods. Last year, there was two, a hundred, excuse me, a hundred meetings in the city, and over a hundred this year, and very few council persons went to those meetings. So what I witnessed is there was a lack of engagement for the city council, and I'd love to bring that engagement to the neighborhoods.
David, same question. You, your experiences, talents, hobbies, what they do?
So you guys are a company trying to interview myself, and I'm going to sell myself to you guys. What your company needs is proven leadership skills that can listen to the needs of our customers, that can unite the vote on that stand with city council members and the mayor to push initiatives, agendas forward. We need action in this company in order to prove, to provide results, in order to drive revenue, and in order to continue forward with your company. I have lived in the city of Oxnard, graduated from high school in the city of Oxnard, went to Oxnard College, went to a local university, and to a local law school here in Ventura. I'm a proven leader, have been a business owner, almost fifteen years in the city of Oxnard in multiple businesses, bought and sold businesses, health businesses, consultable businesses, growth businesses, turned businesses that were negative in the red every month at the city of Oxnard, and turned them into a positive revenue company that provides jobs for the citizens.
Thank you. Aaron, you're up.
I have a background as a CPA. I'm the controller for one of the most successful companies in this city. I'm known as a manager who gets things done. And other people will say a lot to you, but you always know that I'm going to get things done. That's how we got measure on the hill. I said I would do it. It's a lot of adversity, it got done. I'm also known for doing what I say and saying what I do. Sometimes you might hear people, they want to couch things in a way where it's kind of vague, but you want to say, I'm pretty straightforward with you. I'm never going to lie to you. I'm never gonna lie to you. You can trust me." I think more than anything else, you want somebody in the city council who will perform pretty, and who you can trust, and I can bring that to you.
Thank you. Steve, your next.
Thank you. I'm a problem solver and a team builder. The city needs someone who has experience, skills, abilities, to take us out of the crisis that I face right now. I was commanding officer of a ship, USS Spike. When I got to the ship, there were three good water in the belges, we were literally sinking at the pier. The ship was dirty, morale was poor, we didn't have enough money, pretty similar to what Oxnard's facing. In 18 months, I was able to pull together a diverse group of people, we came up with an action plan, and we were winning awards, and were making our mission, including the first US Navy Greyhound on the scene of the last an airline's flight 261, and I'll certainly talk to you about afterwards. I was fortunate enough to be given a second command, where I was in charge of 2,000 people on a $600 million budget. I balanced that budget four years in a row and had reserves. We had a lot of fun while we were there, I also learned how to be a servant leader. I realized whom I worked for, and made sure that those sailors and civilians that worked for me had everything they needed to get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you. Genevieve?
So a little bit about me. So as I mentioned earlier, in my youth, I worked for local businesses, and I also helped leaderships in local businesses, including being a supervisor at age 16. By age 19, as a student at USC, I was reading budgets and leading organizations. I spent almost three years working for Congressman Julia Brownay as her case work manager, or I helped with social security and medical affairs issue, bringing $2.5 million back to Inter County alone. So believe me when I tell you, you know, my heart is, is a servant's heart. I'm here for the residents of Oxnard, and I deserve the community that raised me up, and I'm very proud to be from the city of Oxnard. And, you know, on top of that... (Spanish) And so to that end, I believe I'm a very good fit for this area that I'm working with.
Thank you. Enrique?
Yes, the reason that you should elect me as your next city councilman is because with me, you are electing somebody like you. I am, I am part of the community, I know what it is to struggle, I came from poverty, I know how it is to pay your bills, to get your kids' education, to provide food at the table, to provide jobs, to take care of our elderly people, to pay more attention to our elderly, to pay more attention to single mothers, single mothers ahead of households who need training. I am that person, because I can relate to you. I am one of you. And if you elect me, you're gonna have, basically, you serving in the city council, because my desires and my wishes are the same like yours.
Thank you. Jared, you're up next.
So right out of high school, I started to work for the Whitey Mill Elementary School District. I did that job for seven years, and in that capacity, I worked every classified position that they had available, from the office to the classrooms, to regular ed, to special ed. Currently, I work for LA Metro, which is the second-largest transit company in our nation, in the San Fernando Valley. Now, if I can drive a bus under pressure with heavy traffic, I think I can really take on the position as city council under pressure and be able to keep my cool. You know, the ultimate goal for me getting into this position is to improve the quality of life for every single resident in our community, to ensure that the future for Oxnard is always going to be bright, to tackle the issues now so that we do not put it on our children, our grandchildren, our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Oscar?
The biggest lesson I was taught as a kid is to always work hard, and anything is possible. Being a teacher is, I'm grateful for being a teacher, that's like the greatest job ever. I enjoy, I have fun with the kids, but the most important thing I get out of teaching is seeing kids be successful. Kids account for 20% of our population, yet they are 100% of our future. With that being the case, I see kids who get scholarships to go play football at USC, to go play football at Stanford. That is great, I'm so happy for them. But the greatest thing I think about being a teacher is having a kid who works so hard and being accepted to their dream university.
Thank you. Brian, your, how would you apply to this audience for the job again?
You know, Oxnard is a very diverse community, and I think we need to cherish that. A lot of people don't realize that I had a little different upbringing. My grandmother was born in Chiwalo, Mexico. I came to this country, she was in her early twenties, married my grandfather, and so on and so forth. I remember spending summers with her niece, Los Angeles, growing up as a kid, and not ever really thinking about where she came from or who she was. She was family, and I loved her, and my entire family has been that way. So I think that the things that I bring to this is that, one, never, ever judge a book by its cover. People are people, people who live here in Oxnard are Oxnardians, we are all the same, as far as I'm concerned. Secondly, always have an open door policy, and thirdly, always have an open ear policy. Listen, see, touch, respond, be part of the community. I love this community, that's why I do this, and I think that makes me a very good candidate for this position. Thank you.
Thank you. And Orlando, to wrap up with you on this question.
Thank you. We've heard a lot talked about, you know, revenue, minimums, and so forth, and I feel confident in saying that there's no one on this stage that's managed more money than me. I've managed over 400 million, I'm not wrong, so. But I, what qualifies me for this position is that I'm a rural traveler. While I was in the military, I spent 12 years overseas, and I've been to various countries, and what that did was expose me to various cultures. Everywhere I went, everybody wants the same thing, they want the quality of life. So that's what I would bring to the council. I would bring openness, an open mind, and an open ear, ready to listen, and the skill sets that are needed to get whatever you ask done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to start closing statements here in just a moment, but before I do, I want to take a moment to thank all of the people that helped to make this possible tonight. We all have heard from our chairman, Len Shulman, vice chairs, Jacque Villa, Aaron Pierre, Jermaine, Jackie Tedeschi. We had our timers up front, Ryan Thor and Michael Gleason. We appreciate the help of the city of Oxnard, especially the public relations director, Delena Benacama, and our co-minister, the lease, and the rest of the team for putting this on. So can we give them a round of applause? And now we'll begin our closing statements. We're gonna do it in reverse order, we're gonna start with Jack in about one minute. Go ahead.
Yes, again, my name is Jack Villa, born and raised here in Oxnard. 38 years of my life, most of my adult life, I've served in one capacity or another, whether it was with the schools or the community. In one capacity or at workplace, I served. When others didn't raise their hand to ask for a volunteer, I was the one who raised their hand, most of the time. I love to bring an engagement to the city, an engagement that's not there. As a councilperson, I look to be engaged with all the neighborhoods. I'm not gonna be one of those neighborhoods that are, one of those councilmen that only meets with certain neighborhoods. I'll go past Fifth Street, that's for sure. And I've attended all the neighborhood meetings, and most of the neighborhoods in the city, and I've seen what their needs are, and I've asked for your vote.
Thank you. Our next candidate is David Albinus.
Mike Tyson said that everybody that went through a ring with him had a plan, but as soon as he got in the ring with him, and he smacked him right across the face, that hand went out the window, and that other boxer fell on the floor. Floe Myrler Jr., the best boxer in the world, gets in the ring, is horrible for two or three rounds while he adjusts, and then he takes out his opponent. That's exactly who I am. David Albinus adjusts to the times, adjusts to what's coming, and that's what you need, because even if you have the best plan in the world, but A, you don't execute or take action, or B, adjust, you're not gonna get anywhere. And if you keep doing the same thing over and over again, the same result is gonna come. You need proven leadership, you need an action taker, and you need somebody that has the right mindset, and that can connect to everybody in the city, from here all the way to up here, with proven business skills, proven education and leadership skills. That is David Albinus.
Thank you. A pretty good job, awesome job. We'll get them all at the end, I promise. But our next candidate is Daniel Chavez Jr.
So I wanna read something that I saw the other day online. It says, "Change can be scarier, but you know what's scarier? Allowing fear to stop you from growing, evolving, and progressing." That's from Mandy Hale, and I believe that's what happened in our city. We're not evolving, we're not growing, we're not progressing, and that is an issue. We are not tackling the challenges that seem to be reoccurring every election period. You know, we have a problem of homelessness that has been an issue for so long, but yet we still continue to do the Band-Aid method. Crime, our roads, these are issues that seem to be reoccurring. I will work hard for the residents of Oxnard, because you deserve that. We deserve that as residents, to have a city that reflects us, a city that supports us, a city that provides a health and safety in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Al Albinus.
Growing up in Oxnard, I remember Oxnard being a prosperous, safe, clean, and tranquil community. That is not the case today. The city is still financially on shaking ground due to the lack of oversight and poor decisions by the past and present leadership. The quality of life in the city has deteriorated. In my opinion, we desperately need new elected officials who have firsthand knowledge and experience in managing a business. We need new officials who will be willing to dedicate themselves full-time to addressing and improving the overall state of the city. So please, get to know all the candidates well, their past experience and their past involvement in our community, to see if they are really care about our community or they are solely self-serving. Please remember, if we don't learn from our past mistakes in making the right choices, we're destined to keep repeating the same mistakes over and over. I would love to serve as your elected councilman and public servant. Al Albinus, thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Aaron Starr.
Folks, ask yourself this question. Which candidate has demonstrated real leadership and turned talk into action? The city council thought they could intimidate me with a lawsuit. I fought back and qualified Measure N for the ballot in 16 days. I am absolutely committed to making Oxnard an attractive place to live and conduct business. If the city council fails to address City Hall's fundamental problems, I'm prepared to move ahead with other ballot initiatives to reform the city government. As the financial controller for Haas Automation, one of Oxnard's most successful companies, I understand what it takes to create jobs and manage budgets. Oxnard is falling behind its neighbors, and we just can't afford business as usual at City Hall anymore. Oxnard's a dynamic community, but our city government is like a stubborn mule's wheel. It's time for innovative new leadership at City Hall. Let me be your champion. Help us make the change we need by voting for Aaron Starr for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Steve Huber.
I'd like to leave you with this story. When I was a midshipman in United States Naval Academy, I used to walk through a set of bronze doors that had a Latin inscription above it that said, "Known civi, said patria, not for self but for country." We knew we were getting into something greater than ourselves while we were there. That's the way I see the Oxnard City Council. That's what I wanna do as your Oxnard City Councilmember. It is not about me, I have no personal agenda. My agenda is what is best for Oxnard. So my motto is, "Known civi," said Oxnard, "not for self but for country." Not for self but for Oxnard. Check my Latin. We can be a well-run, great city, but it's gonna take some work, and I'm ready and willing to roll up my sleeves and work with you. I have the time, I'm a business owner, I do sign the front side of the checks, and I know what it takes to run a city. I have the time because I have a flexible schedule. I've been endorsed by a number of organizations, from unions to the Chamber of Commerce, and I think that stands for an awful lot, so that hopefully you'll see me as a person. Thank you.
And our next candidate is Enrique Petris.
Yes, if you elect me, I have several, several ideas that I wanna bring into the working. One, I'm gonna lower, I promise you that I'm gonna lower the crime rate. We're gonna go in there and we're gonna put a riot on the police chief, and the crime rate will go down. Two, we're gonna create good-paying jobs that offer good benefits. I have a plan, and I have to create more than 100 good-paying jobs per year for the next 40 years. Third, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work very hard to lower the voter tax. (Spanish)
Our next candidate is Brian McDonald.
Thank you. I'm pleased to say that I have endorsements from a variety of groups, including the Chamber of Commerce, a variety of labor unions locally, even grassroots organizations like Cause Action Fund, and I've also received support from the California Political Action Committee under the California Association of Realtors. I've also been endorsed by the VC reporter, the Inter County reporter, and I'd like to read part of their little clip, and it's online, you can see it, I just abbreviated. But Brian McDonald's been the voice of fiscal reason in the city council. He is one of the few candidates for city council actually who understands how the city government is financed, and how its budget works, and has consistently worked with his constituents to solve problems during his eight years on the council. I would appreciate your support to continue on in my mission to serve the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Orlando Donner.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and listening to us tonight. Throughout the night, when I respond to questions, I've been peppering it with some of my experience. I'll just go with this, 20 years of budget, plus 20 years of budget experience. I was a chair of the community relations, sat on that commission for two years. I'm a current planning commissioner in my second year, I'm a 20-year Air Force military retiree. I spent three years on my neighborhood council, I've been on a PTA, and what I've just described is the criteria that I believe you need to have to be a city council, so, councilman. So I hope that I've earned your trust, and you give me a look this November. I have your signs out in the front, and you can go to OrlandoOxnard.com for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Genevieve Flores-Harwell.
Thank you, everyone here. Thank you to the DNC, I'm putting some, thank you, Mr. Merron, for moderating. You know, as your next city councilmember, I will work to build a city that is both environmentally and economically healthy, and will engage residents in the city government and the choices we have to make as a community. I believe firmly in practical solutions to the issue that plays our city, whether it's housing, the creation of local jobs, or the environment. I believe I have a passion, experience, perspective that is needed on the council. I have the skills to work with my fellow councilmembers to come to an agreement and to move the city forward. As your next city councilmember, you will have a councilmember that does their homework, that is accessible to the residents of Oxnard, and cualquiera que sea. And as your eyes set to the future, I look forward to meeting all of you, and I'm looking more forward, more so to earning your vote on November 8th. For more information on it, please check out my website, it's a mouthful, but it's GenevieveFloresHarwell, one word, dot com. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our next candidate is Oscar Madro.
My key focus is one Oxnard, meaning that we will prosper together or we will fall together, but key to this is we need to improve our public safety, we need to work with our youth, we need to work with the local school districts, we need to work with our local churches, getting the voice out, getting more people involved in this process. We also need to look at traffic, we need to improve our public transportation, meaning in time it will improve the streets. We are here for the city. That's it, I think. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And as a reminder, when we're leaving, if the illegal women voters have put this out there, and you don't see anymore, there's a box underneath the table. Right, but this time, how about a great round of applause? And that's the election that's due, and we'll be doing this next Monday, it'll be here, we'll have the candidates for mayor. We're only gonna have three, so we won't have the micro... We're only gonna have three, so we won't have the microphone problems, and that'll be a little bit more open in the sense of debates and rebuttals and all that, so, uh, please tell your friends, come back next Monday, same time, same place. Thank you all very much for tonight.